Good evening, welcome to Board of Slightmens meeting, May fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand for the pledge. At this time, we will open up the meetings to public comments. We respectfully request that all items already on the agenda not be addressed. And that your comments be limited to three minutes, so everyone has the opportunity to address the board. Later in the agenda, there will be a second opportunity to address items raised during the meeting. We have any public comments? Announcements and calendar, please help protect our lakes and drinking water. Clean up your yards and your dog waste. Construction to finish phase two on Dawson Street project from the fall of two thousand twenty-four. Well, it started and it's pretty much ended, right, Richard?
I don't know, I haven't got an update.
Okay. It's getting to be almost done. It looks good, the sidewalks look good.
They're demolding, the project itself is done.
The project's done, okay.
Yeah, it looks great.
It does, it really enhances, so anyways. Public hearing will be held May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for Comcast franchise agreement at six oh five P M. Public hearings will be held at May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty P M for updates on change to town fees. New business, department head reports. Go ahead, chief. Just please, Lisa's first on here, that's why.
Thought you'd be a nice guy.
Yeah.
You just hit the red button on the bottom of that.
No, on the mic.
Turn it on.
Turn it off?
On. Just hold the red button in on the bottom of it.
Okay. All right, monthly report. All right, so last month, we hired Officer Silly. Officer Silly took his certification test at the beginning of this month and passed. His P T test and his written exam, so he's now released off of F D O and on solo patrol. Officer Watts and Officer Kena, uh, excuse me. K nine red are currently in a scheduled break from narcotics training school and will finish to be certified by the first week of June. They will then be on patrol until September, when they will go to patrol school. Where K nine red will learn how to track safeguard Officer Watts and apprehend resistive subjects. Sergeant McNulty completed his first day class in Milton with thirty-nine graduates. Lifelong resident Maureen Steer was the guest speaker. Corporal Barker starts the SWAT training for SWAT one and two this month for Straver County Regional SWAT team. That'll be a two-week training that he will go to. And then he will come out and be a certified SWAT operator. We are currently at five thousand six hundred and seventy calls for service for the year, which is thirteen hundred more than last year at this time. The police department has seen an uptick in internet crimes against children, or I C A C. We urge all parents to monitor online activity and the use of electronics. In the past, we've had to send out electronics to be scanned and data checked by outside agencies, which takes quite some time because we're working with kind of their caseload. However, we now have an in-house I C A C investigator, Officer Duran, who has a very fast turnaround time and he's very thorough with these cases, which is. Unfortunately, we have them, but fortunately, we now have him in-house and he has the proper equipment to do so. Boat patrols will begin shortly here in Milton Three Ponds as the weather warms up and residents and guests begin to enjoy the water. Traffic and D U I saturation patrols will begin in the month of May and the town utilizing funds from the highway safety grants. And the speed trail will be going out this month. If you have a road of interest you'd like to see the trailer on, please visit our website and email Corporal Barker. Any questions?
What next, the town clerk?
Hi, guys. So, April has passed, which means if you haven't registered your dog, you are past due. May is a get out of jail free card month. There's no fees assessed, so if you haven't registered your dog, please do so with us. We have over a hundred and fifty dogs that haven't been licensed yet, so if your dog has unfortunately passed, it's possible that we don't know about that. So, we're just asking you to contact the office. The vets are broad view is really good about it, but not all vets communicate the passing of the dogs. So, something we need to look out for, so that when we apply civil forfeiture, we're not sending you a bill. So, you can do that just by giving the office a call or shoot camera myself an email. Just a reminder about some hours that we have, changes are being made. We will actually have the office closed May nineteenth through the twenty-third. We are closing to be working on our record retention, cleaning up our files, getting everything sorted and organized. That was left at Emma in storage, so we really need some time to focus on that. And it is unfortunately difficult to do that and process registrations at the same time. So, we will be closed. A reminder that the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, so we'll also be closed then, so the office will reopen on the twenty-seventh. For that week only, we will be open on Wednesday to make up for the closure from eight to four. So, we'll have four days left in May to wrap up any transactions that residents need to take care of. And then June second, we will be starting our summer hours, giving them a try to see how that goes, making adjustments. Monday will be open eight to four. Tuesday, we will be open twelve to six, so we're gonna stay open later on Tuesdays. But those first four hours will give us some time to do some more of that office work, stuff that doesn't get to happen when we're dealing, being open. Wednesdays, we're gonna stay closed. Thursdays, we're gonna open at seven A M and stay open until six P M. We've made the change from seven to six P M only because the D M V help desk is not open. So, if we have residents that come in and try to process the transaction, unfortunately, you know, there's a snag and we aren't able to do that. They have to come back anyways and we just don't want to have them be inconvenienced in that way. And then Friday will be open eight to four. So, those are the new summer hours, those will be starting on June second. We'll obviously have them posted on the website, they already are as far as June second goes. I did see that last fortunately, posted them on the Facebook page, but I know not everybody's on Facebook, so they are on the town's website under the town clerk tab. As far as taxes and water and sewer bills go, we are still processing the water and sewer payments in our office, as well as Sarah is taking them too. We are no longer using the Docso platform for online payments. You can actually pay your water and sewer bills at the same spot on our website where you can pay your taxes. So, you just go under the town clerk tab and click the icon that says view or pay taxes. And your water and sewer bills show up there, so you can make those payments online. We are set to now be taking tax payments in the office with credit cards. We made some adjustments to that platform, so we can actually process credit and debit cards. It's the same fees that apply as every other transaction that we do, so, but it is just, it is open to do that. And then the last thing is just a reminder about the late notices that went out for your two thousand twenty-four taxes. We will be leaning that tax year in July, so people do have until then to get those balances paid off.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
The face showed a question, so.
From who, me?
No.
Oh.
And then recreation, unfortunately Karen's not come tonight, but what we did discuss about recreation is we're gonna get a couple new pieces of playground equipment that's being bought through the revenue down at the beach. And so, that's really what we talked about. And she's getting ready to, you know, do summer camp, so I think she has a few positions open and left, but it's filled right up fast. And that's really what we discussed with recreation. Any other questions? Discussion request for purchase of the drag tech twelve-foot asphalt drag box, Director Walden.
So, C I P C reviewed this last week at their first meeting. They voted unanimously to support the purchase of it, that it was an appropriate purchase through C I P. They did make a suggestion that it be purchased directly out of your budget.
I have no idea where else it would be purchased from.
So, I know the board had, the board had talked about it on the twenty-first about either coming out of the U B W C R F nineteen ninety-seven highway special equipment or using some of the block grant money to purchase it.
I would caution not to spend anything out of our equipment funds because everything breaks constantly. So, if worse comes to worse, I would say that the special equipment reserve fund should be reserved for emergency equipment purchase or something of that like. That's just my opinion, I think I would take it out of road construction if it was me.
Out of the three sixty road construction or the block?
I believe it was.
Three eighty?
Out of the three eighty is, that would be my, it's no different than last year when we rented a piece of equipment to do road construction. This is buying a piece of equipment to do road construction.
I'll make the motion to go that way. Second.
Oh, in favor?
That works, yeah, because I know you don't have it, you're right, there's no money available at this point anywhere else, so.
No, and as far as that equipment purchase C R F, I think any money we have in reserve towards equipment purchases should be kept.
Yeah, I was just trying to come up with a possible way if you didn't have anything else, that would be an option.
I appreciate that.
All right, Bill, thank you.
I think you're up again, Bill.
You don't go anywhere.
Discussion on proposed transfer station fees, scheduled change.
So, have you guys had a chance to review, what are your thoughts on it?
I think it's, I mean, it's not really, I think it's more than fair.
Yeah, it's not, it's not breaking the bank for anybody, they're just simple adjustments here and there. Like I said, I think the biggest thing is adding an additional five cents a pound on the scale. But, I mean, even that's just kind of keeping up with what inflation's done and, you know, keeping our revolving fund where it needs to be and keeping it in the positive. I mean, we're not gonna, it's not like we're gonna make hundreds of thousands of dollars or even tens of thousands of dollars.
Or even hundreds of dollars.
Well, hopefully we can make hundreds, just enough so we can.
Just get by, it's just.
Yeah, we do have some cans we have to buy and the building's gonna need some work sooner than later. And so, it just keeps the fun, it keeps the dump sustaining itself, and that's all we're trying to do.
I was talking to a guy this week, he lives in Salem, but owns a camp in Milton and his stickers are sixty bucks a year.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's one thing.
I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I'm just saying, but that's what they are, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, currently, our sticker revenue is only covering about ten percent of what it costs to get rid of garbage, so. I'd say the, there's really no raising it to a point where we can cover that, it just, I think maybe, maybe a couple of years down the road after we figure some other stuff out, we'll revisit sticker prices. But for the time being, it just is what it is.
Barely covers the cost of the stickers themselves right now, so.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, the revenue, we have about ten percent of what we bring in for revenue, we just buy some stickers, so. Yeah, as far as the fee schedule though, like I said, it just, the other thing would be approving the purchase of the, I believe it was.
Weight and scale.
Yeah, so, and that'll get us back on track with losing money on small electronics and things like that. So, we'll actually be covering our costs and getting rid of electronics if we actually weigh it out. Doesn't make sense to me to charge a flat fee to get rid of them when we pay by the pound.
Don't know, that stuff, you don't know how much it weighs, I mean.
Yeah, and some of it's surprisingly heavy, so, I mean, paying three dollars to get rid of something, the cost of town, twelve dollars to get rid of, that's a bargain, but we shouldn't be. That's gonna put us in the hole eventually.
No, that makes sense.
Do you need a motion on that, is that on?
Well, that's.
Do you have another hearing?
We have to have a public hearing. As part of the public hearing, they're on here for the board to review all of the proposed.
Yeah.
From all departments. To see if the board has any comments or suggestions to change what the department heads are looking for before we put it on the public hearing notification, put it in the paper and then have the public hearing on the nineteenth.
My suggestion, I know you'll be there for that, is just to have some of your data, so when somebody asks a question, like, what's it costing?
Yeah, actually, I brought some stuff tonight in case anybody had questions, but.
That'll be, yeah, that next meeting will be the big one. You're gonna add, inevitably, you should get something that's gonna say, okay, we're raising this Y, what's it costing, so.
Yeah, we're looking at putting together something like, I mean, it's hard to track, but, I mean, we're, some preliminary numbers were like nine hundred to a million pounds of garbage a year. Between what goes over the scale, what goes out solid waste. And, and, let's, it sounds like a lot for a small town, but there's actually more, because you gotta think of the private people, the people that have dumpsters, the people that have garbage bins. So, our town produces a lot of garbage and, you know, we're somewhere around a hundred and fifty dollars a ton on average to get rid of it. So, when you start crunching numbers and doing the, and the cost of disposal is just rising. I mean, like I said, I think three years from now, we'll probably see six figures just for, you know, solid waste and co-mingle stuff.
Don't.
Not six figures, I'm sorry, we're already in the six figures, we'll see close to another.
See more.
Yeah.
It's gonna double. But again, just to have that one ready for you, Bill, that's what I'd say.
Sorry, I just misquoted myself, a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know why I was thinking a million, I got that million number stuck in my head.
Six.
Six figures, yeah. So, yeah, so we'll continue to the next.
So, review of two thousand twenty-five fee schedule, proposed changes, code enforcement.
So, you should have the code, the proposed fee changes for code enforcement. Code department explained that they used data from compiling six surrounding towns and cities, comparing their permitting fees. Then found the median of all of them within the median of the six communities. They found that nine dollars per thousand, nine, nine dollars per thousand for residential permitting and then twelve dollars per thousand on commercial permitting. Then they increased some of the other fees to go along with that for the inspections.
She did a good job, because she's got thirty-dollar flat fee plus those fees, which is good.
Do you have any questions, Ben?
No.
I'm good. Yeah, you did a good job.
The police department is looking to change their police detail rates, I'll let the chief speak to that.
Did you guys have a chance to take a look at the rates? So, the rates have been at the eighty-five per hour for.
Yeah, three years.
They've been like that since I got hired in two thousand twelve.
No, no, they changed.
What was the detail rate when I got hired here?
Seventy-five when you got hired in twelve.
Oh, but the officer still kept the same amount of money, fifty an hour, or is it forty?
No, it was forty when you got hired here.
Okay, sorry, but it's been quite a while, in my opinion. Surrounding towns, Farmington, Middleton, New Durham, Wakefield, Barrington, Lee have all increased their detail rate, so in order to be competitive with other agencies, we should increase the detail rate for contracted details. Again, this is people coming in to do details in town, this doesn't cost the town any money.
Makes the town money.
Makes the town money. So, the new proposed rate is a hundred and ten an hour, the officer receives sixty-five, the administration fee is ten and the detail line gets thirty-five dollars. Everybody around us is at sixty-five, Wakefield's at seventy, New Durham's at seventy.
For the officers.
For the officer, yeah, so it's much higher, but it gives ten dollars, everything kind of gets an increase. So, I believe that it's a good deal for the town, everything costs of everything coming in is more expensive, so in order to be competitive with that and.
What do the officers get right now?
Fifty.
Fifty, it's gonna go to seventy?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, I'm sorry.
So, it gives a little bit incentive for them to work more details, because the money ultimately goes back to the town. And we are, in my, I mean, I could be wrong and really ask too many questions to other agencies, but we're one of the only towns around here that require a detail. A police detail if you're gonna be in town, unless, we can't fill it and then you can use flaggers, but most other towns.
I think Wakefield, on your list, the only one that does not is Wakefield.
Just kind of does their own thing.
The rest of them all require.
Obviously, it's nice to have an officer there, everybody has to take the D O T safety traffic cone course and most flaggers have to take it as well, but the officers have to take it as well before they do any details.
I think it's fit.
Good, no questions?
No, I think it's fine.
Thank you.
Town clerk has some fees he would like to change and I'll let him speak for those as well.
So, nothing too major that we're requesting changes in. The first one is with licensing for the two thousand twenty-five year, so that would be starting January, increasing it a dollar per dog to license. So, the senior citizen rate would go from two to three. And then any dog that is spayed or neutered would go from six fifty to seven fifty. Un-altered dogs would go from nine to ten. Basically, a lot of towns are doing this and what it does is it covers the cost of the actual dog tag. And I feel like we're trying to put more of a focus on, you know, services that specific residents use and them being the ones that would pay for it versus the whole town. So, not everybody owns a dog, so if you own a dog, then you would pay for the tag versus it being part of our budget and coming out of just that in general. So, the other thing to go right along with that would be adding seventy-five cents to online transactions, which, not per transaction, just your shopping cart. So, if you, you know, register three or four vehicles, there would be an additional seventy-five cents to cover the cost of, help cover the cost of postage. Right now, we know that in July, there's gonna be another postage increase and this is the fourth increase since I've been working in the office. So, we would just like to help stay, this year, stay within our actual postage budget. But again, paying for the services that you're using is not putting that burden on just everybody in general. And the last thing, we've seen that a lot of towns are doing this, that actually have a clerk that is more than a notary, justice of the peace, performing the actual wedding ceremonies, as much as it sounds too, you know, very informal to come to town hall, fill your marriage license and just say I do. But a lot of towns are charging fifty dollars for the town clerk or even the deputy of their justice of the peace to just perform a simple ceremony. And that's something that I think we could benefit from, I know I've done five of them, again, since I've been here, I've just, but with no set fee before, we didn't charge them anything. But with that fifty-dollar fee, it would include their first copy of their actual marriage certificate, so just a service so that if they're here to get married, they come in. One and done, stop shopping here at Milton Town Hall. But, you know, the cute thing is that they actually, there are a few town halls that have like a little harbor, a little place set aside where they go and do it, it's not just standing there. So, I just think it would be a benefit to anyone coming in, because we've noticed a serious increase in vital records, transactions that we're processing and that includes a lot of marriage licenses and some people, I mean, they come in, they fill it out and they don't even know what they're doing, when they're doing it. It's just like, you know, we're gonna do it at some point, so. Like I said, nothing major, just.
No, it's fair.
Couple changes.
Appreciate that, thanks, Brian.
And the fire department has fees they would like to initiate.
How's it going? So, the fire department's never had fees for inspections or permits. Been something that's on my list to do for years, so this meeting kind of got me thinking, now's a good time, since we're gonna do a public hearing and everything like that. My thought process in the past has always been the revenue isn't worth the aggravation for the volume that we do. But I think to, you know, get brought up to modern times and be ahead of any building that's coming to Milton in the future, it's time we do it, so. The assistant chief did a really good job comparing a bunch of local towns and these are the proposals that he came up with, I reviewed it. Seems pretty middle of the road and fair to me. Simple, it's based on the square footage, not the device, the number of devices, which I like better. So, I guess the first question is, do you guys want to initiate fees for the fire department for some basic inspectional services? And are you okay with where we're at, or do you want me to look at anything different?
I don't know, I mean, surrounding towns are, you know, have this in place and.
We get a lot of calls like, so that, I think we will, some of the call station, hey, you know, where do I get a permit? What's it costing, we don't do that, so.
Looking at what you have down here, the only thing that I was gonna say is you've got, there's a report request, Tyler didn't put that into yours.
The report, yeah, we charge ten dollars right now, currently.
It's not, I'm just saying, it's not showing on, you wanna make sure for the meeting that you have it in there.
The only thing we actually charge for right now.
But again, and that's the one that's not there, so.
There's lots of other things out there, but the Rochester ones, like, it's not even in place yet, but the draft one that I looked at was like six pages long of different things, so. Like, this is a pretty cut and dry, basic thing that will cover a lot of what we do.
About the burn permits, is that?
You can't charge for those, it's, the only fee for those is if you get them online.
Online cost to transfer.
Transfer fee, just like the license and all that.
Yeah, no.
No, that looks good.
Move forward.
Yeah, now we just gotta come up with a permitting process, because we don't have a real good system in place, so we'll work on that now.
The board has no issues with that one as well?
No, I said, the only thing, we just wanna make sure that you've got the report one on there and, like I told Bill, just have the data for it for the meeting, you know.
Thanks.
Any other changes, any other departments? Karen didn't have anything or anything like that, no?
Recreation had no changes.
All right. Letters, a letter from Solar Toad Lake Management in reference to herbicides treatments to control non-evasive nuisance and growth.
The N I A D treatments.
It's just letting the community know that they will be doing the treatment. It'll either be late June, early month of July or early August of this year. They show you in the map the three areas they're gonna do. If you have, if the board has any questions or concerns, we should be sending them to Solitude Lake Management. They can answer any questions or concerns.
Going all along the New Hampshire side and northeast and then the channel.
And then it is in Townhouse Pond, it looks.
There's another section down there with the little.
Just before Townhouse Pond.
That's the thumb area, they call it.
All right. Up next is the state bridge aid and federal program agreement with Wynden Road Bridge Project number four four three nine zero.
So, we received the updated document from the state of New Hampshire where they are listing. So, we received the updated document from the state of New Hampshire, where they are listing program year for twenty-twenty-eight. They are showing, the grand total is one million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. With the preliminary engineering costs at two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, five-forty-seven, and then the total construction and engineering costs of one million, four-hundred-and-four-thousand, five-forty-three and eighteen cents. They're estimating the town's local twenty percent share, if it stays at the state, and federal program agreement, to be three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. As we know, with the engineering study that came from HEB, um, the two options that HEB gave us were two-point-four, I think, and two-point-eight million dollars. So, um, I don't know that the state's going to match HEB costs, so my expectation is that we're gonna have those in route costs. On that side of it. So those are, as we read the HEB engineering study, the board has to make a decision as to what route we want to go. Do we wanna continue to move forward with option one from HEB, do we wanna move forward with option two, or does the board want to not do either one of their options and wanna move forward with our own option? If we move forward with our own option, there is the possibility that we not get any state or federal aid, uh, because we're not following their requirements. So that would be, that would be one of the risks for the state side of it. Um, as you guys see in the project agreement, it does say that there is a three-point-seven per year that will be added, um, for inflation over the next four years till we get to twenty-twenty-eight, um, but even adding three-point-seven percent over a four-year window for inflation, we're still not at the two-point-eight million dollars, or even the two-point-four million dollars.
And that's gonna go up at the same rate, minimum.
I mean, how much, how much money have we spent so far with, with HEB?
Well, the contract with HEB is a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars.
That's what we spent to rent the bridge and everything else.
The expenditure for the bridge costs is much more, but the, the contract with HEB is a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, so we're gonna spend a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for the engineering and planning portion of this. And then, depending on which project or which option we choose, could be significantly more, or if, um, we decide to go with option three, our own option, and we try to go and find a bridge company that can do it cheaper, then it'll be on the town's dime. Um, but if we can get it done at a cheaper rate on the town's dime, instead of spending close to a million dollars, then that'll have to be an option, we'll have to decide we wanna, an avenue we'll have to decide.
There's a possibility before, I know we don't have to decide on this yet, but possibility to bring Hanson in to discuss it, see what it costs. I mean, we, I think we need to under, we need to have an understanding, if it's half a million dollars, we gotta come up with a half a million, and if it's a million for this, then we gotta know the difference between them before we can.
When was that bridge built, or Wynden, when, when was that done, what year?
The bridges, when was the bridge redone?
Yeah, I mean, when was it, um, yeah, I mean, how, how old is that, how old is that?
I don't have a clue.
Gotta be.
Bob, when did your development get finished?
I don't, I was not there when they started that. I was there in twenty-sixteen. You're talking about the.
Where you live, yeah, where you live.
The circle that.
Circle, oh, yeah.
Heaven Circle.
The other one, Liberty Circle was.
Liberty Circle was after, right?
Yeah, I, I was there before that got developed. That was around twenty-sixteen. I take it back, I've been there.
The bridge was done long before that, yeah.
I think around two thousand and six, you know, that, that I can remember, 'cause I retired, I was still working, but then I finally retired in, in two, two thousand and eight, but.
My only thing.
But it was not, okay, developed, the land was all put up there, but nobody was building on it.
My only thing, you know, I mean, yeah, I know, you know, going with the, with HEB's, you know, either recommendation is, it's a lot of money, and but, again, you know, this is gonna be a fifty-year bridge, you know, yeah, um, how long, we gotta figure out, like, the longevity of, um, what it was gonna be if we tried to do this on our own, you know what I mean, because.
I, I think.
I just don't wanna be back, I don't wanna set the town up for failure, um, in the future.
And I think the other bridge companies, um, if I remember correctly, one, the one other bridge company that we spoke to, he said it was a fifty-year bridge, the way his does it as well, correct? Or was his a thirty-year bridge?
The Hanson, so Hanson, there was like a minimum of fifty, but the, that's not a complete bridge, you want me to come up?
Yeah, come on.
So, the way the Hanson bridges are quoted out is they're, uh, hundred-year galvanized steel beams. Uh, he estimates at about fifty years, you're gonna have to peel up the surface and recover the beams, so you have, um, basically a layer of like six-by-six timber that's rated for anything in the state of New Hampshire that's legal to drive on it. Um, they do a membrane, and then they pave over the membrane, so what you're doing, if you start to have failing timber, is you peel your hot top and your membrane, you replace the timber, and then you new membrane, new hot top, so it's a, you know, a three-day process, versus, and I think there's a method where you can cut half the lane out and do it in sections, or just use rope lay, 'cause it's not, it's not much of a span there, so. But either way, that's, he, he said they're hundred-year beams, and then the rest of it's probably like a fifty-year maintenance schedule.
Well, it's really.
So it still meets what this does.
There's another company, I mean, in the interest of getting other prices, I've been, I've had other road commissioners and stuff call me and give me numbers to, uh, there's a Bean and Associates Bridge Company that does the same thing that Hanson does, and then there's a third one, so we could, we could get three different quotes at least, and then get a couple of them in here to explain what they're doing and how they would do it, and, uh, I think the biggest thing is we need to find a company that can do a bypass. Because, you know, obviously, there's no other way for residents to get in and out, so I think the bypass is where we're gonna see the, you know, as far as extra stuff that we're gonna have to spend money on. But yeah, I was, that, that was how it was explained anyways, was, uh, structurally, it's a hundred years, but it's a fifty-year maintenance before you're gonna have to, you'll probably see about fifty years before you have to start doing any kind of like major repair.
I tell you, it'd be nice to, I mean, if we did it on our own, it'd be nice because we could move the project up, and we wouldn't be renting the bridge for the next.
Five years, four years.
Yeah, you know what I mean, we could save money on that end.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we, we had a company that could come in and guarantee that, you know, their engineering's gonna pass state standards, and then, and then, you know, they can give us a timeline, they can give us a price, and at least we know where we stand as compared to, you know, taking money from the state, or. Is it, the way it looks to me is, we end up paying almost the same amount in the end anyways, it's just who knows where that other million and a half dollars ends up, so. So it's almost, it's.
I think the difference right now is, if we get a set fee, four-hundred, three-fifty, four-hundred, five-hundred, whatever it is from this company, it's gonna be able to move forward at that point, not go, well, we don't know if we're gonna get started, and it keeps escalating like it did with Townhouse Bridge, I think.
We have a price, and we can get a timeline on how good that price is, or how long that price is.
Yeah.
I think that's something we haven't gotten from HEB, we haven't gotten from anybody else.
This is already, this has already been pushed out, just like the others have, and it'll, and there's a good possibility it'll continue to get pushed out.
Unfortunately, the Warren article failed.
I, I think, 'cause last time I checked, quotes are free, and asking rounds are.
Yeah, for the extra money, it, it shot down, so we've only got three hundred and something right now, so. But, quotes are free, you're absolutely right.
And it's also worth noting that Hanson brings his own engineering in with that price, so, uh, uh, we don't necessarily need to hire outside engineers or anything like that, he's a New Hampshire licensed, he the, the whole nine yards, it's a one-stop shop, so.
I think the thing we tell HEB at this point is that we need to, we need to do a little investigating, 'cause they didn't make any changes based on what we discussed, this is nothing more than what they did for a presentation, they've done nothing else, and said at this point, we haven't changed anything, we need to do some investigating before we decide. And meanwhile, we can get them coming in, that's my suggestion.
So if you would like, I can start reaching out to these people.
Yeah.
Setting up some appointments to show them what we got going on.
It'd be good, good, you know, idea where, where we're, where we'd be at with them.
Cost, cost and timeline.
Yeah, absolutely, I can, I can put that on the list, and we'll get moving on it.
Thanks, Bill.
So can I, I just, my request is just, can the board review what we received from HEB?
Yeah.
Um, that way I can respond to HEB.
I've done that, I'll give you my response tomorrow, we've gone through it.
And Bill, I, I think I forwarded you the HEB as well.
I did, yeah, I think I got it.
When you get a chance, it's not a small document, so you can go through it as well, give me your response to it, so that I can give that back to HEB as well.
Absolutely.
Review of town-owned properties for possible auction.
So, um, a few of the town-owned properties that we have, um, taken in tax deed over the last many years, um, and some of the open spaces that have been called about, created a list for the board to review, um, some of them will require extra extended processes to put them up for auction, but my hope is, uh, depending on what the board wants me to do, if the board is good with this list, then I will move forward with, start the investigation process on this, make sure we've done everything we were supposed to do when we tax-deeded it, um, and then move forward with making sure, uh, we have everything that we need to do to start an auction, ho- hopefully for September. I'll have to do the ninety-day notification of the prior owners, and then we will move forward with that as well.
So you give the, you give the, the owners, former owners ninety days?
We, by statute, we have to give them ninety-day notification that we are auctioning the property.
And then they have a thing to come in and.
They can come in and pay off the back taxes and, and buy back the deed, or they can leave it to go to auction, and then when it goes to auction, um, after the Supreme Court rulings, the town gets their legal costs, the deeded taxes that are owed to the town, and any other costs that may have, if we had to do a, a health officer cleanup, or we had to do something to that nature under RSA one forty-seven, we can attach that to the cost after it's sold as well. So then, anything above what is owed to us in the, that amount goes back to the previous owner.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
List looks complete.
Was anyone on there for Silver Street, I didn't see.
Twenty-four Silver Street.
Twenty-four, okay. Do you have any questions in?
No, I'm good.
Also.
Let's get this going.
Let's move forward with it, get the process started.
Um, next is the assessment, review tax abatement request. Do you, do you wanna go like, uh?
Just go right down.
Right down?
The list, yep, so, map seventeen, lot twenty-one. The recommendation for the town, from the town assessors, um, is to deny the abatement, uh, based off the fact that the change occurred after the April first, twenty-twenty-four assessment date, uh, which would mean that it would not be, um, applicable for the twenty-twenty-four tax year. It does not warrant an abatement at this time.
So.
How do we wanna do this, are we gonna do this just with a motion on these, right?
Yes, a motion.
All right, hold on a sec, um, I'm just trying to find, um.
Seventeen, yeah. Should just be number one at the top.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, I went through these and.
Seventeen, lot twenty-two.
Yeah, I was looking at the map lot, but.
So just look for the number right here in the corner, number one.
Thank you. All right.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to, uh, with what Avatar says and deny.
Uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye. Should be number three.
Yeah, three or two?
Three.
Three.
Should be three.
Yeah, now I messed these up, I, I'll, I'll, again, I'll find it, I apologize, I was, thought I was doing something good, and I was actually not. Anyways, all right, twenty-eight Kingsbury Drive.
Nope, uh, map thirty-two, lot one oh-nine.
Okay.
Is the next one we're doing, yep. Um, again, Avatar is recommending to deny the abatement, um, they have reviewed the subject property, uh, both neighboring homes and waterfront properties around the lake, the dwelling is appropriately classified as a cottage, uh, with a lower-than-average quality construction. The classification accounts for both seasonal use and construction type distinguishing it from more modern and converted year-round homes in the area. So the assessment is fair and consistent with similar properties.
I will make a motion to, and, and agree with Avatar to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh, next one would be number four.
Yeah.
Which is map forty-seven, lot twenty-four. The recommendation for this one from Avatar as well is to deny the abatement. Uh, they've reviewed the information and considered properties' design, infrastructure, and market function, uh, and find that the assessment is currently fair and equitable.
And going through and reading this one, I agree with Avatar to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Map thirty-three, lot two thirty-two, number seven. Um, Avatar is recommending a denial on this one, um, after review of recent sales and overall assessments data within the town, uh, Avatar finds that the current assessment on the subject property is fair and equitable based on the information provided and analyzed.
Well, I, I went through this, um, they actually went above and beyond, they did their homework, um, and I sort of agree with, with the, with the resident.
The only thing going to say on this one is, the, there's no, um, actual assessment done on the property, the market analysis by a real estate agent is not an assessment on the property.
Well, I mean.
The property in that area.
I did, I did my own, uh, through a, through a realtor, uh, when I was actually trying to find out how much my house is worth, 'cause unfortunately, I was going through a divorce, and I had to figure out, um, what my house was worth, and it was done through a, um, it was done through a broker. So, um, I.
This isn't, but this one's not an assessment, this is just what they think they can, they say this is what we think we can sell it for. Um, knowing the area, knowing what else is in that area, including my own property, put it that way, in that map lot area, um, on, on that particular thing, I would have to agree with Avatar, and I know Avatar would back us in court, and, uh, there's other properties in that same area that are even higher than this one, so, you know, my personal thing, it's not a personal thing, I mean, my belief is that Avatar's correct, based on that, so. I mean, my motion would be to deny, but based on Avatar's assessment.
My, um, that's fine, uh, my motion, I, 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 I have a, my. My, um, that's fine. Uh, my motion, I, 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 I have my own motion, um, because I do think that, um, that this, this property owner has done his homework and, um. I mean, I. I, I think it'd be fair to, they're asking for eight twenty-five. I think it'd be fair to put it at eight forty-five, um, instead of the nine thirty-six, um, by looking at other properties on this road. Um, I, I think this.
That actually puts it right on, that puts it below the houses next to it. That number puts it below them. I personally can't, I personally can't agree with that. Not an accessory, but I know, looking at the way the, the other, looking at the way the other properties are, 'cause you got a listing here and everything else, the evaluation is pretty close to what all the others are.
I'm just going by, I'm just taking a, uh, I'm, you know, if you take all these, you, you, it's, it's the middle of the road, um, assessment at eight forty-five. I, I honestly don't think that, I think that, I, I don't agree with this assessment, so, um.
But if you go to eight forty-five.
I, I, I personally would split it between the nine thirty-six and whatever the eight twenty-five. Right in the middle.
All right, I'm fine with that.
That's what I, that's what I would go with. I'd go along with that one.
So, uh, so, so I would say eight seventy-five. That's, that's the middle.
I'd be on board with that one.
It's my motion.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Next. It's nine.
So you abated it to eight seventy-five?
Yes.
Number nine, map twenty-eight, lot forty-four. The Avatar is recommending that the abatement be granted. They updated the waterfront actress. And for the subject property to reflect the correction with the adjustment and the revised assessed value of six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred, representing a one hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars, um, reduction. They recommend the abatement be granted after secondary review.
Just on their, based on their review, I would move forward with giving them the abatement.
Can you go, Matt? Yep, um, yeah. Motion said?
Yep, there it is.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, the next one is map thirty-five, lot forty. Avatar's recommendation is to deny the abatement, um, after making the appropriate adjustments for the differences in location, land area, age, dwelling characteristics. Um, Avatar finds that the current assessment of three hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred to be well supported by market data.
I make a motion to move forward with Avatar's denial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is map thirty-three, lot two oh three, sub lot seventy-one. Avatar is recommending the abatement request be denied. After review of available market data and comparable sales, the current assessment is reasonable and well supported. On this one, a- all they gave was a purchase and sale agreement from two thousand seventeen. And home prices have.
Gone right up.
Home prices have changed dramatically since twenty seventeen.
Was that map thirty-three?
Thirty-three, lot two oh three, sub lot seventy-one, yep.
Yep, and I make the motion in, in agreement with Avatar to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So map thirty-four, lot twenty-nine. Avatar is recommending giving a partial abatement, uh, be granted. Upon review of the property details and conditions, Avatar finds an adjustment of the dwelling condition rating is appropriate. This change results in a revised total assessment of two hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred, reflecting an eleven thousand one hundred dollar decrease.
I will make a motion in, in agreement with Avatar to give the eleven thousand dollar, eleven thousand one hundred dollar decrease.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last one is map forty-seven, lot seven. Avatar is recommending to deny the abatement, um, with consideration for the current market conditions. Uh, due to the current high demand of entry level housing, many, many adverse attributes and have negatively impacted property values in the past, such as proximity to utility infrastructure, are often overlooked by today's buyers. They find that the assessment in current value is fair and equitable.
I'll make a motion in agreement with Avatar to deny.
Uh, second. Aye.
Uh, we're gonna fill this. We can do this after.
Yeah, no, I just said make sure that.
Uh, lose this one here. Last one.
Yeah, that's the one I have.
And then take care of this one when we're done.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so the last thing we have to go over is the opening of the bids, uh, for the fire truck.
Okay.
For the fire truck.
Okay.
So I will hand them to you, Mr. Chairman. You can open the four bids.
All right. Everybody just keep your, I know it's exciting. We're gonna make some serious money here, so. This is, uh, say bid one, um.
Who's the bid from?
Do you want me to tell you the bid?
Yes, yeah, read out loud who the bid is from, yeah.
John A. Luscher, uh, for, well, I bid five hundred and one dollars and ten cents. But the check is for fifty-one dollars. It's, oh, so they're putting.
They have to.
Put a ten percent down.
They give ten percent.
All right, very good. So that's Mr. Luscher, five hundred and one dollars and ten cents. So here is Robert P., uh, Moholland, M-O-H-O-L-L-A-N-D. Um, and he has bid, let me just see here, he put a bid in for, uh, for one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Fifty-six cents.
Well. So this is, uh, I'm gonna submit a bid. Uh, this is Mark Johnson. Uh, he submitted a bid for three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents. This is the big one right here. Uh, so this is, um, William Fothergill, uh, F-O-T-H-E-R-G-I-L-L. Uh, his bid is for two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and no cents.
Do you have any thoughts, Chief, on the amounts?
I mean, you, 'cause we, we can.
We can say no.
Say no to all these and, um.
You remember what we got for the ladder truck?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't think it was.
Terrible, are you?
No. Moving forward, I do like Billy's, um, you know, process. I think we can do a lot better.
If we go to the auction.
Well, the thing is, it's not, there's no fire department that's ever gonna buy this, so it's collectors and it's only worth so much money.
Sure, I hear ya. All right, well, can you just point your opinion?
Yeah, it's up to you guys. Honestly, you can. Thirty-five hundred dollars is whatever that one was, that.
You think there's the possibility that they, on one of those auction sites, it would get more than thirty-five hundred dollars?
I'm not familiar with how they work. I haven't followed them. Billy, maybe you can, I don't know if you've seen older trucks. But if you, if you look at older trucks for sale online.
They're in this, they're in this range.
Yeah, well, ten thousand dollars is the most you're gonna see him listed for, and that doesn't mean they're selling.
So, I guess I will say that the, uh, about a year and a half ago, the town Lebanon Bug, fully functioning, needs nothing, no maintenance, kind of fire truck, about the same budget for ten thousand dollars. So, thirty-five hundred for a truck that needs.
Tires.
Tires and stuff like that, probably.
It's gonna be close to that by the time they put tires on it.
Yeah, it's not the, not the worst offer I've ever seen on some truck.
Yeah, it doesn't, up to you guys, but it doesn't scare me.
So does the board wanna make a motion to accept Mark Johnson's bid at thirty-five thou- thirty-five hundred, three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents?
Motion said?
Yeah, I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. He's a proud new owner of a old fire truck.
All right, we'll get ahold of everyone tomorrow. Can I have that envelope back?
Yep. All right, up next, event permits.
We have no event permits.
Old business.
The Comcast franchise agreement, first public, or the public hearing, uh, will be May nineteenth. It's not the first public hearing, it's the public hearing for it, uh, will be May nineteenth. The, um, hope is that the boat ramp project, the paving, and the dock will be in before Memorial Day, is my hope.
Okay. Even the docks, you think?
That's my hope.
Anything else under, um?
That's it, under old business, yep.
I had, um, under, oh, no, that's not old business. I'll bring it up under other business. All right. Uh, communications received, none? Uh, others, business that maybe comes before the board?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Bill, and then I get one thing.
Does your thing the same thing as what I think?
I don't know, let's see.
I, uh, speaking to the cemetery trustees, um, we have a bid for yearly mowing closing on May ninth. This Friday. Uh, the next board of selection meeting is until the, is it the eighteenth or the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Yeah, so, um, we have to figure out a way to award a bid before the nineteenth so we can get mowed before Memorial Day.
I mean, we can have an emergency meeting for the trustees.
Yeah, so my ask was either to schedule a meeting, uh, next week, Monday, sometime during the day, just for half an hour, I think.
Yeah, I think we, we need that, uh.
March, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, um, just figured I'd bring it, uh, bring it to you guys' attention, uh. But if we, if we can get it awarded by the fifteenth, I'm sure, I, I was, everybody that's been calling and asking about it, we made it clear that the first mowing needs to happen before the end of May.
Yeah, 'cause if they close this Friday, we can meet sometime early next week.
Yeah, and then, uh, like I said, I think Nicole might have had one or two agenda items if you guys were to have a meeting. Though I can, I can let her know that if you guys wanted to schedule something, we can.
Okay. But you can just, uh, email all of.
Well, if those, if those, if that bid closes on Friday.
Yeah, Friday afternoon.
You should just schedule a meeting for Monday.
That's fine.
Especially if Nicole has a couple of other things to bring up, either that or just let public works and the admin and the Sexton. All the other.
Yeah, that was my other suggestion, is, uh, either. The assistance of Rich, um, goes over the bids and awards lowest bill, a bidder, if you guys wanna have a meeting, we can have a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if, if Nicole has a couple of other things she wants to go over, then yeah, we should definitely do it.
We should have a meeting, yeah.
If she doesn't have a couple of other things, my recommendation would be to just let Sexton and the admin handle it, is my recommendation.
Like I said, I do think she has a couple, at least just to keep you guys abreast of what's going on, um.
No, I mean, we can, we can have a, we can have a meeting on Monday.
They're pretty self-sufficient down there with everything, but it's, it's nice to keep you guys.
What do you got going on Monday, Rich?
Do you wanna have the meeting? Well, we have a meeting, CIP has a meeting Monday night.
CIP does?
Yes, Monday evening at six, so.
We can meet in the afternoon.
But I think.
The afternoon would be best for.
Call.
Schedule.
Yeah, let's meet in the afternoon.
Yeah, it won't take long, so.
What, what time does she, uh, normally leave work?
Two o'clock.
Uh, she's out at three.
At three?
In her email to me, she requested the meeting be between eight and two, sometime between eight and two, so.
Yeah, I think that's what she.
One o'clock meeting.
Why did it say two?
Well, she says she wants between eight and two.
I think she can do it at two o'clock.
Okay, two o'clock works for me.
Okay. Just, do all right, Matt?
Yeah.
And, uh, it's gonna be raining anyway, so don't worry about it. Um, okay, so two o'clock meeting, um, here for the trustees, cemetery trustees.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, so, um, any other business, anybody else? I have one thing, um, uh, the, uh, Mr. Tebow requested, didn't he request to use the, um, the townhouse for historical society?
His email was that they had been given permission to use the building and asked if it had been, um.
De winterized.
And so I don't know what the board's agreement with the historical society is, um, whether or not it was giving them permission to use it when they were working on their building, or did you give them, uh, open access to use the building?
I don't recall any, given any permission at all, I mean.
We let them use it for a couple of meetings because their building was being worked on, if you remember.
And I don't mind letting them use it, no.
Let it be used.
Bill, is the, the building been de-winterized?
Yes.
Townhouse?
Yes, sir, yeah, we did it, uh. Last week, I don't remember what day.
Yeah, I d- I certainly have no problem with, with them using it for a meeting, um.
For a meeting?
For a meeting.
Not for storage or for anything else?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No.
We oughta, we also oughta know when they're doing a meeting because it is costing us money to get it, they let it run, just to know what it is.
Well, you know, but other people use it, um, for, for.
No, just ain't, just let us know when, that's all.
Yeah, no, yeah, of course, he can just, uh, we have a key, uh, sign up and, um, I'm, I'm fine with them using it, so.
Okay, so the board is okay with them having a meeting there?
Yeah, a meeting, yep.
It was May eighth, correct? Is that when they wanted to, uh?
Yes.
I feel like, so I'll, I'll just, just so I can make sure Alan goes in and just gives a quick cursing.
Okay, okay. Um, and the only other thing, um, I had on other business, um, where are we at with Depot? Pond Road.
Depot Pond Road.
With the.
Which one of the?
The, the house on Depot.
So we have, we have two different ones.
No, 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 old Wakefield, I'm sorry.
On old Wakefield Road, I'm working with the town attorneys to, um, get the proper documentation, so we have it from, from the courts. So we can make sure that we're doing everything we're required to do, uh, we are moving forward under RSA one forty-seven eleven to be able to do a cleanup. Um, but we have to make sure that we've done everything through the court properly to make sure that we can recoup the cost for the town after we do those cleanups.
Right.
Because when we tax deed a property, we can only do so many things on that property and making the property in a better light, using taxpayer dollars. Is not one of those things unless it meets certain standards, health code obviously is one of those certain standards, but to be able to do that. We're making sure that we've got all the court documents to allow us to do that, so we can recoup it after that property has been auctioned off.
And that, and that ball is in, in motion?
Already in motion.
Okay, perfect, appreciate it, um, cause, you know, anyways.
I, I want it cleaned up before animals start to get into it or before we really start to get into the heat.
Well, yeah, that too, I mean, um, I mean, when the wind blows there, unfortunately, every neighborhood in that, every neighbor, uh, is getting something. And it's not right, it's not fair.
The ball's rolling forward, it's just.
Alright, perfect.
How quickly I can get the ball to roll forward is.
I know, I know, courts is not fun.
More out of my hands.
No, I hear you, alright, once we're moving forward, um. Any other business, anybody, anything else? Approve all the minutes.
I'll make a mo-, I know you got the ex-, we did make some changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as changed.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that was for the twenty-first. Expenditure report?
So the expenditure report, I'm working with department heads, um, we are in communication with each other when there are lines that seem to be, um, a little out of whack. The department heads are working to bring those lines back in and they are watching their budgets, so that way budgets are not gonna go over at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the expenditures have slowed down a little bit the last couple of weeks, which is a good thing, um, and we will continue to move forward with that. We're watching our revenue numbers, um, my expectation is, um, Ryan's motor vehicle revenues and his office's revenues were up, uh, in the first quarter. But my fear is that the second quarter may see a decrease in those types of revenues, um.
Yeah?
Not last month.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping I'm wrong on what I'm seeing.
I can't wait to, to tell you that you're wrong.
I hope so.
It will be joyous, 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 and I will make sure it is at one of these meetings.
I, I truly hope I am wrong that.
No, we did have a really great April, so, um, we'll be able to know very soon how well May is.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping the second quarter doesn't do what the expectations are, um.
Projections out there.
It stays pretty well for us.
Okay, um, alright, uh, a more detailed, uh, oh, okay, so town administrator, go ahead.
I think we missed public comments pertaining to the previous topics.
Yeah, public comment.
I thought we would, uh, expenditure reports.
Yeah, but the public comments is the previous page just before that.
Oh, okay, in public comments, sorry. Anything? There we go, I knew it.
Uh, Larry Brown, uh, several, um, I am greatly responsible for the, um, the successes of, um, the tax collector and that, uh. Uh, since there are no taxes on motor vehicles in the state of New Hampshire, uh, my fees came out, as I remember, to five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And damn it, you need that thirty-five cents, um, more importantly, uh, on subject of fire, uh, Trump, uh, has now. If I heard the news report, uh, correctly, uh, pretty much dissolved the National Fire Academy. Naturally, there are no more wildfires expected, uh, in, uh, the West, uh, FEMA will go, money will go down to the states, uh, as less. And most interestingly, for the consequential nature of his first hundred days in, in office, uh, yesterday was a consequential day. It was the end of World War Two in Europe, today is the signing of the unconditional surrender of Germany. In April of fourteen ninety-three, that was a consequential day, the expulsion of Jews and Moors from Spain, the beginning of the Spanish Inquisition. What is missing from Trump's work, he has gotten failing marks across the board, even from Fox News, where a survey is has him down in, in the twenties. And what is missing desperately is compassion, one of the things that has been lost is a miracle. I know from contacts I have had in the community of a young woman who came through high school, uh, in the COVID epidemic, floundered. And got a job of, you know, miracles. She is now in her second year of high school. What is missing from Trump is compassion, and I will go off topic to tell you of compassion. A Mother's Day is coming up, an organization called. Nega. And they specialize in reconstructive surgery for gynecological fistula, where the woman has had such a desperate childbirth. That she leaks urine ever until surgery repairs it. The organization, compassion, what is desperately missing from Trump. Thank you, and good luck on the fire department, which was the beginning of the public comment.
Thank you. Alright, so we, we hit the expenditure report, town administrator.
So your next meeting will be May twelfth now, your next regularly scheduled meeting will be May nineteenth, um, we are having two public hearings on May nineteenth. The Comcast franchise agreement, uh, that public hearing will start at six oh five, uh, my expectation it should be done by six thirty. The, uh, proposed, the twenty twenty-five proposed fee changes for the town of Milton, uh, that public hearing will start at six thirty on the nineteenth. Our regular meeting will commence after both public hearings close. The town of Wakefield has reached out to us to, uh, complete the twenty twenty-five preambulation walk for the town lines, uh, for Wakefield and Milton. So we would need to have at least one board member, um, and the town administrator to take care of that with Wakefield. Uh, they'd like to schedule it either June or July of twenty twenty-five, so, um.
I have time.
If the whole board wants to be there for that walk, or if you wanna choose one board member to be there for that.
Anything I wanna do is, I know I can be there, so.
I mean, I'm fine if Humphrey wants to do the walk, do, I mean, it's up to you, man, do you wanna?
I'm fine with that too, yeah.
Well, thank you Humphrey for, uh, stepping up for the walk.
Yep.
Okay.
I will contact Wakefield and get some dates to get that completed, um, Coast Bus is doing a community survey. I've held, I've hung the community survey out here in the community post area, um, the survey is between May fifth and May seventeenth. And they would like to get some information from the community who uses the bus, um, and the people in the area, um, as to why they don't use the bus. Um, so if residents happen to be in the building, uh, they can also go to info at coastbus.org to take the survey that way. But it would be good if the residents can give that information out, uh, because it would be nice to get the Coast Bus to come back into town again. Uh, maybe if we could get a bus stop, um, at Dollar General or that type of area in downtown, um, it would be a big. It would be a big help to many people in town, I think, if we could get it back to town, um, but I.
I mean, maybe, uh, as, Mr. Eldis loves, you know, he, this is, it would be good for him, he'd put this right on his page.
Yep.
And, um, you know, he likes doing the surveys, so.
Yep, I can, um.
And he'd appreciate it, so.
I can have it posted, um, tomorrow, let's try to at least put the information as to where they can go to get the, to do the survey. The Dawson Silver Street Phase Three portion has come out, I need the board to review that document, um, and give me feedback on that. This is the end portion of our grant, this is the compliance portion, because this is the, the reporting phase of what we would like to. This doesn't lock the town into doing this for Phase Three, but this is what we, we view as the best practice in moving forward for Phase Three to close out this project.
And that's just the drainage, that's just the drainage part of the project, though.
Yes.
It is not.
So if the board has, if the board has other information that they would like me to send back to Underwood to add to this report, um, then I can do that as well. Just so that way we can, we can show the state that we do have a plan for Phase Three, we just don't have a timeline for when we want to accomplish Phase Three.
Now, uh, when are they supposed to be doing the assessments on the sidewalks or, um?
I have not heard back from Bruce yet on that grant, um, when Bruce gets back from vacation, I can ask him.
Okay, cause I know there's some, some serious grants out right there, right now for sidewalks, like, really good grants.
Well, I think we still have the grant that was applied for, for five hundred thousand dollars for this.
What's that, yeah?
Phase Three portion of that four sidewalks.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I think it expires if I'm, and I may be mistaken, but I think it expires in twenty twenty-seven, um, so I wasn't part of that grant, so I don't know the exact parameters of it. But I think that that would probably, the board could look at when we start pushing for Phase Three and getting Phase Three completed. I know the conversation that we've had in the past when it comes to Phase Three, when I was the chief of police, was to shut off Dawson Street, the parking there. Make Dawson Street a one-way in or a one-turn in, not the two, that it's currently at, to try and slow down a little bit of traffic. Um, instead of having them come off one twenty-five and just drive straight, um, which would also give us a little more downtown parking. So that's one thing I would like to see in the reporting phase of Phase Three, is to show how we're gonna design that area of downtown.
Right. Alright.
That's all I have for right now, uh, Memorial Day, the Memorial Day Parade, we have not received the event permit back yet, but I know they are filling it out. It's not gonna be any change than it was last year, so I have no.
It's in the mills?
It's gonna be in the mills this year.
Okay. Very good.
That's all I have for the board.
Slapman's comp? Yes, go ahead, Larry.
Uh, on the topic of community surveys, I live in computer ignorance, happily, uh, has there been any follow-up, uh, final report on the reuse of town buildings?
June second.
Yeah, coming up in June.
Yeah.
In June.
June second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and a stop sign, uh, at, uh, um. At, uh, Elm and Dawson?
Okay.
Is there a stop sign issue at Elm and Dawson?
Slow them down.
Elm and Dawson.
Down the bottom of Elm Street.
Oh, um.
There is none.
There is, yeah. Billy's all over it.
Got the bill?
I'm sorry, on, on church, uh, church and.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there was a, there was a barricade there that had a stop sign on it, but, yeah, yeah.
We're waiting for the materials to come.
Okay. Yep, thank you, Bill.
Steeple Street.
Steeple and Dawson, so you have the four-way stop.
That's what I was confused about.
Okay, uh, slapman's comments?
Uh, I'm good.
We're gonna talk about when we're doing the flowers at the cemetery on Monday?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, cause I know we've got that.
Yeah, I was just reading it.
Okay, I.
The, uh, flowers, I didn't know if, you wanna do it Monday?
You guys already approved the purchase of the flower.
We approved the purchase, this is just, remember, we go out and place them on the graves?
Yeah, it's just gonna be, when?
When are we gonna place them on the graves, usually do it on the Saturday, the weekend before or something?
Friday, the Friday prior to.
Friday, okay.
And we have volunteers from the DP, well, when I say volunteers, I change around some schedules.
Alright. Okay, if you need any help, um.
It's the idea.
The one area.
Humphrey and I.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've paced that whole, well, Billy, I did it with Billy last year, too, we paced that whole cemetery.
It takes the village to get everything where it needs to be.
Well, at least Nicole's got a better mapping set up now too, so it should be a little bit easier.
Okay.
That's all I got.
That's all you got, yeah, I'm, I'm good actually tonight.
Well, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?